Stayin' up late if you don't go to bed.
The Internet is such a wonderful thing.
People's hands, no.
Meeting's ordered. Do we have any citizens or public comments? Seeing none, welcome everybody. Consideration of approval of the agenda.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Clerk, a call or roll?
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Agenda is approved as submitted. Consideration of approval of the minutes of the April 6th meeting. Any questions or discussion? So moved.
Second.
Clerk, a call or roll?
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
The minutes of the April 6th meeting are approved. Consideration of approval of the consent calendar. Any questions or comments regarding the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second. Clerk, a call or roll?
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Consent calendar is approved as submitted. Business of the mayor. We have two proclamations. The first being for National Service Recognition Day. We have somebody here requesting that proclamation. Nope, nobody?
I'm not.
Okay.
Yeah. We were patiently waiting.
Good morning, Mary. Stump you.
Of course.
Come on.
Yeah.
Step up to the microphone.
We're asking the council to recognize...
Your name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mary Litter, Director of Foster Grandparents. Asking the council and the mayor to recognize, um, uh, national service. Uh, we are part of the Corporation of National and Community Service in recognizing our volunteers that are out in the community working with kids. So we ask that you read the proclamation and I'll take a picture.
Are there any questions for...
Do you have anything special going on, Mary?
Uh, yes, we have our appreciation going on May 7th. And, uh, we're going to be honoring all the foster grandparents and asking at around 4 o'clock for all the teachers and sites and principals come in and honor them. I did bring some ladies along and I would like them to introduce themselves and tell you where they volunteer at, how long they've been in the program, and a little bit what they do with the kids.
I'm Wanda Ward and I am at Lincoln Elementary School in Mrs. Williams' 5th grade class. I've been a foster grandparent for three years. And I help with, um, social studies, reading, uh, geography, and, um, I guess that's it. I help with, um, individual kids that need help and I also help with the groups. And I really enjoy being a foster grandparent. Thank you.
My name is Betty Kiefer. I'm in the 4th grade at Lincoln Elementary where I've been for 10 years. I can't get out of the 4th grade. I work with Mrs. Sandy. And Wanda and I were fortunate, we had the day off today because both the 5th grade and the 4th grade went on a class trip. So we got ready for the citywide cleanup today. I enjoy being a foster grandparent, obviously. I work mostly this year in science and math because over the classes that they have while I'm there. And I really appreciate the opportunity to be able to be a foster grandparent. Thank you.
I'm Margaret Jayden and I work at Washington School with Mrs. Shobrock. She's a Title I teacher. And she does reading with kids. And once in a while, a child comes to me and I help them read. And I have another boy that comes and, uh, I've been helping him a lot and, uh, he's getting very, very good. And I've re- I've been a foster grandparent going on eight years now, so... And I really enjoy this, so thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. We'll be out in just a minute. Next up is the proclamation for Elks Youth Week.
My name is Barry Sweet. And I'm asking the mayor and the council to read the proclamation for Elks Youth Week. It is scheduled for May 1st through the 7th. And the Elks is big into youth scholarships. Uh, it's one of their main goals is the youth and the veterans program.
Any questions?
Anything special going on, Mary?
Um, we're having just, uh, the memorial or the banquet, the youth banquet is in May. I don't know for sure the date on it.
Okay.
May 3rd.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Our motion to approve the proclamation.
So moved.
Second. Clerk, a call or roll?
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
The proclamations have been approved. I'll come down and read them. We'll take the, uh, foster grandparents first. This is just fine.
Well, we don't do this every day.
No, I understand. But you do a lot better things every day, so we're...
Thank you.
Whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges. And whereas Americor and Senior Core participants serve in the more than 60,000 locations across the country, bolstering the civic, neighborhood, and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our economic and social well-being. And whereas National Service participants increase the impact of the organizations they serve with, both through their direct service and by recruiting and managing millions of additional volunteers. And whereas National Service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community sol- solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayer dollars. And whereas National Service participants demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors. Now therefore I, James A. Urb, Mayor of Charles City, Iowa, hereby proclaim April 21, 2015 as National Service Recognition Day in Charles City, Iowa, and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of National Service in our city, to thank those who serve and to find ways to give back to their communities. In wit- in testimony thereof, I have hereon to subscribe my name this 20th day of April 2015. And I think everybody in this town is pretty well aware of the success story of what you do for our kids in this town. And I think you probably get a little benefit feeding back to you with, from the kids. So, uh, it's a mutual thing and we're all very happy that it's working so well. Thank you very much. Next up. Whereas the benevolent and protective order of Elks has designated the week of May 1 through 7 as Youth Week to honor America's junior citizens for their accomplishments and to give fitting recognition to their services to the community, state, and nation. And whereas Charles City Lodge Number 418 will sponsor an observance during that week in tribute of the junior citizens of this community. And whereas no event could be more deserving of our support and participation than one dedicated to these young people who represent the nation's greatest resource and who in the years ahead will assume the responsibility for the advancement of our free society. And whereas our youth need the guidance, inspiration, and encouragement which we alone can give in order to develop these qualities of character essential to future leadership and go forth to serve America. And whereas to achieve this worthy objective, we should demonstrate our partnership with youth, our understanding of their hopes and aspirations, and a sincere willingness to help prepare them in the way for the responsibilities and opportunities of citizenship. Now therefore I, James A. Urb, Mayor of Charles City, Iowa, hereby proclaim May 1 to 7 as Youth Week and urge all departments of government, civic, fraternal, and patriotic groups, and our citizens generally, to participate wholeheartedly in its observance. In testimony whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Charles City to be affixed this 20th day of April 2015. And we thank you very much. We know you have a series of programs that are connected with youth and we couldn't be happier that the kind of support that you are providing for the youth of this community. Thank you very much. Next up, I have a request for street closing for Relay for Life event. Discussion.
Good evening. My name is Karen Anderson and I am on the committee for the Floyd County Relay for Life. And we have, uh, come tonight to ask permission to block the street, the 300 block of North Jackson, the night of June the 19th, which is the evening of our relay when we do many laps around the city park there. And we ask that the street be closed from 5:00 PM to dusk so that, uh, we can have the go-karts from the Boy Scouts there as part of our entertainment. And, um, we need that block to set up, uh, a course for the cars to go through. And Connie Burney has talked with Chief Anderson and has put in the request. And so I'm here tonight to ask for your approval.
Are there any questions or further comments? So moved.
Second.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
It's a worthwhile event. Thank you for doing it. Yep.
You're all welcome to come. Bring your families.
Thank you very much for the invitation.
I was gonna say.
You know I'm... Clerk, a call or roll?
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
The request is approved. Request for street closing for car show at Trinity United Methodist Church. Discussion.
Well, I can get, just to kind of recap what we discussed in our work session. Trinity United Methodist Church would like to hold a car show on October, on August 1st as a fundraiser. And Craig Ham was here to speak to us and presented a request to close Briggs Street north of the church from, on August 1st from 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM to park cars for the show. Um, he's kind, he's spoken with Hugh Anderson, our chief, and has completed the form and everything. It seems to be okay. I know we talked about that there is secondary access for the apartments across the street. So there shouldn't be any issue with, uh, anybody not being able to get to where they need to, need to be. So recommend approval.
Since I told Craig you didn't have to come back tonight, I'll go ahead and move for approval.
Clerk, a call or roll?
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Request is approved. Consideration of public hearing and 2015 Capitol Fund Housing Projects. Open a hearing. Is there an affidavit of publication?
Yes, Your Honor.
Any written comments or objections?
None, Your Honor.
Any oral comments or objections?
Moved to close the hearing.
Second.
Clerk, a call or roll?
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Hearing's closed. Now a public hearing.
Mayor, I'm sorry.
I'm looking for something else here.
Okay. Well, we're, we're ending there and at that point because actually we received no bids on the project. So we, we, uh, opened and closed the hearing, uh, tonight, but we did receive no bids. Uh, but just, uh, for your knowledge, at the next workshop on the 27th, I know that the plan is to discuss the, um, various phases of what was bid as three separate projects. And Heidi might be able to speak more on that, but that's essentially what, what they, what the Housing Board is, is reviewing. They're gonna break that down into, um, smaller projects for individual contractors to hopefully garner some bids. So that's how we'll be moving forward with that. Is this the one where it was some handrails and windows and siding and... Sim network and ADA and... Okay. Yeah.
But we need to run through a, a process before we get to the next phase.
Could've mentioned it during oral comments, but...
Okay, next is the public hearing on Urban Renewal Plan Amendment for Southwest Bypass Tiff District. Open this hearing. We have an affidavit of publication.
Yes, Your Honor.
Any written comments or objections?
None, Your Honor.
Move to close the hearing. Any oral comments or objections? No.
No.
Second.
Clerk, a call or roll?
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Okay, the hearing's closed. Consideration of Resolution 55-15, approving Urban Renewal Plan Amendment for Southwest Bypass Tiff. Discussion.
Yeah, and what we're doing here is we're amending the, uh, Southwest Bypass Tiff District to include, uh, the Cambrix project, which is the $40,000 forgivable loan request that the city has received, uh, in, uh, in connection with their expansion. What, uh, what we've, uh, discussed doing through our Southwest Tiff Committee and through our discussions is offering a $40,000 forgivable loan that the city is going to advance, um, to Cambrix and then with us ultimately certifying that $40,000 back through, um, Tiff certification for the following year. Basically, their, the, part of their project is they're gonna be adding 32 high-quality jobs and, uh, we're offering a benefit of $1,250 per job. And that's what, that's how that $40,000 is derived. So what we'll be doing here is amending the Urban Renewal Plan as this project was not in our plan prior. So then we can utilize, eventually, uh, utilize Tiff dollars to reimburse the city.
So we have, just help me...
And I can talk through...
Three separate, uh, resolutions, right?
Yeah, we have three separate resolutions. This first one actually amends the plan to put it, to put the $40,000 project into the plan. Uh, the next resolution executes the loan, forgivable loan agreement between the city and Cambrix. And that's what I just handed out tonight. We just received that final version from Dorsey and Whitney today, our bond counsel. And that lays out the parameters, um, the timeline, number of jobs required, what happens if they don't meet that, and how the loan is forgiven. But essentially, if they add the 32 jobs within the, the three-year parameter, then the, the $40,000 is forgiven. If they don't do the entire 32, it's prorated out, um, for any shortfall there is. And, uh, that agreement there lays that out. Uh, and then the final resolution is essentially how we're going to be funding the $40,000. Uh, we're gonna be doing an internal borrow from the city's general fund, $40,000 to advance the money. And then this fall, um, December 1st, to be exact, we will certify, uh, $40,000 in Tiff revenue from the Southwest Tiff District and then be reimbursed, uh, for that incremental amount over the next year. The Southwest Tiff District is a shared district between the city and the county. So we're doing our actions tonight as far as, uh, setting things in place. And then the county will be filing on, on April 28th to also approve the uses of Southwest Tiff funds. But, uh, since we're the ones advancing the funds, we're the ones that'll set up the, the internal loan and also have the actual development agreement, our forgivable loan agreement with Cambrix.
So now, first one up then is 55-15. Uh, any discussion or further questions regarding that?
I was just going to ask the, basically what we're doing though is somewhat still, um, requiring the county's approval to go along with that, correct? Correct. And that's why you see on, you'll see on the date on the forgivable loan that we're entering into that agreement on the 20th. But we're not gonna actually, uh, cut any check or award any funds until the 29th, which would be the day after the county approves. So we'll wait until we get county approval that we're gonna be able to, to fund this. Because if the county wouldn't approve, then it's kind of back to square one. Again, at least for the Tiff District anyway. Correct.
With the county approval, it goes to Tiff District. We're ju- we, the city, are just advancing the funds to be reimbursed from the Tiff increment in December when that gets approved.
Right. We'll certify it in December, which means we'll collect it over the course of the next fiscal year.
So the ultimate, the ultimate payment comes out of the increment in the Tiff District because of the investments we're making.
Right, right. You know, they're making about a $44 million investment. And so we're, uh, gonna be having an increase in, uh, taxable value. And this is, this will be a portion of that increase.
So we'll still have 55-15 as...
I so moved.
Second.
Any further discussion on this resolution? Clerk, a call or roll?
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Resolution 55-15 is approved. Next up, consideration of Resolution 56-15, authorizing the Economic Development Loan and Forgivable Loan Agreement, which we have, was handed out just as we met here. So you have that in front of you. Are there any questions or discussion regarding this item?
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, a call or roll?
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Resolution 56-15 is approved. Consideration of Resolution 57-15, authorizing internal advance for funding of urban renewal project. Further discussion?
So moved, Your Honor. Oh, what, sorry, you were discussing. Second.
Clerk, a call or roll?
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Resolution 57-15 is approved. Consideration of Resolution 58-15, awarding contract for housing rehab at 602 South Johnson. Discussion.
Heidi Nielsen, the Housing Director. This project is the last project for the owner-occupied rehabilitation program that we have in the Wildwood area. The maximum amount of the program grant funds that go to this is $24,999. And if the project exceeds that, the homeowners are required to contribute the balance. Um, the homeowner at 602 South Johnson meets all the eligibility requirements. And the work that we're planning to do on the home includes updating the electrical and the plumbing, uh, to bring it up to code. And then, um, some of the existing windows will be replaced and a new roof is going to be installed. And then there's gonna be some miscellaneous areas of the house painted and, um, some flooring coverings replaced. And the kitchen cabinets will be replaced. We held a contractor tour on April 7th with the bids due on April 14th and we got two bids. One bid we got was from Watertight Construction for $44,744. And we received a bid for $36,814. Um, our cost estimate was $37,000, 600, $37,649,000. We met with the rehab committee on April 16th to review the bids and they have recommended awarding the contract to the low bidder, which is Bob Keenigs and Family Construction. I guess that's about it.
Have you done business with this contractor before?
We have not. Um, they were, um, given our name from Niocog, from Steve Went. So I called him and they've worked with them on this program for about 16 years. And he didn't have any reservations with us awarding the contract.
Other questions or discussion?
So moved. Second.
Hey, stay there for a minute. Clerk, a call or roll?
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, Resolution 58-15 is approved. Just interested, this is the last of this particular series of...
Right.
...projects. Are you contemplating any future activity?
Well, that would probably be up to the city. Um, we've talked about it a little bit, but with the grant application isn't due until around November, December. So we have a couple months to talk about it before we get really serious on an application. But I would anticipate we're gonna apply again.
Yeah, and we, we talked before, there's at least one area that we haven't focused on yet that would be good to do, so...
Okay. Curious. Okay, consideration of Resolution 59-15, approving purchase of truck/blade/sander. Discussion.
Well, for fiscal year '16, uh, year upcoming here, we, uh, we budgeted for a snowplow replacement. And so we put bids out here this spring. And we actually received, uh, seven bids from, uh, seven different vendors. And our, our winning bid, or our total net low bid, went to Don's Truck Sales. The bid for the truck, blade, and sander was $123,765. And that's what we're asking the council to approve tonight. Um, they, they also offered, uh, we asked for trade-in value for one of our used trucks and we received a trade-in value of $20,000. So the total net bid is $103,765. But, uh, the amount we need to approve is $123,765. So the council will approve this purchase tonight from Don's truck. We can, we'll go ahead and get the, the, the vehicle ordered. And then it'll be this, this fall, hopefully right before winter, that we actually get it in and take possession and we'll pay for it. And we will be into our new fiscal year by that point. I also can point out that our, our, our actual, the, the lowest bid came from Harrison Truck Center for $122,182. But they only offered $17,005 in trade. So they actually ended up not being the, the lowest bid on, on the vehicle. So I just wanted to point that out also. One thing nice I guess about Don's Truck Sales is that's typically where we get our blades and sanders from. And so this will actually be kind of a one-stop shop for, so that'll be helpful. So we ask that you approve the bid for $123,765. So now with the, the full payment then will be reimbursed? Is that how that's gonna work? The $20,000 trade-in? Right. We'll actually pay it, we will actually pay that net amount of $103,765 when we take possession.
This is a budget of that, right?
It is. We budgeted $120,000.
Good. So moved.
Second.
Clerk, a call or roll?
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Resolution 59-15 is approved. Consideration of Resolution 60-15, approving lease for 1308 Clark. That'd be a garden area.
Yes, our community gardens that we've been talking about. When we last discussed this, we were, we...
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Resolution 59-15 is approved. Consideration of resolution 60-15, approving lease for 1308 Clark, that'd be a garden area.
Yes, our community gardens that we've been talking about. When we last discussed this, we were looking over the general parameters of the lease, and one of the questions we were dealing with is liability insurance. Who would, would they be able to get liability insurance? If not, was that an additional risk that the city was willing to take on? Well, I did some additional research and talked to our insurance agent and shared with Wendy Johnson what, you know, what they'd actually be looking at, you know, price-wise most likely, and that discussion led into Wendy contacting an insurance agent, and they're actually obtaining the $1 million of liability coverage and naming the city as additional insured. So the liability's going to be covered, and so as you see in the lease agreement, I've worked that as number five. I put that back in there as far as insurance. It says the tenant shall obtain, now technically our tenant is community revitalization, but it's actually the group, the community garden group itself is going to be the ones that obtain the insurance, and this is the city, so. I spoke to Wendy again today via email, and it's in the process of being underwritten, the insurance, so. And so now we just need to work on the water issue, figuring out exactly how we're going to get water there on a regular basis. As you recall, we talked some about rain barrels, and in that setting, there's, you know, the volume of water needed for the space provided, probably just wasn't going to work out the best, so what we're looking at for a short-term solution is we have a hydrant about a block away that we are looking to put a spigot on for the very short term, but eventually we would like to see some type of water bulk tank or covered, that can be covered and locked, that would be on-site, and so we're working out the details of how we're going to get to that. Their goal is to have 20 bunks ultimately. I think they're going to start out by building 10 and see how that goes, and then do an additional 20 as needed. But the cost for the insurance, they're going to work that into the cost of lease for the bunks, so.
I see in the lease agreement it's still got the rain barrels in there.
Does it?
Right at the bottom of the first page. That's the only thing I saw when I read that. I just, I don't know that it hurts anything to have it in there, but I just remember we talked that that wasn't going to work, so, on a couple of different levels, but...
Including but not limited to rain barrels, so we could delete that from there. I mean, the concern on the rain barrels is I wanted to make sure that there was lids on the rain barrels, so we didn't have ponds from mosquitoes, and we didn't have a hazard for possible drownings, things like that, so perhaps we could approve this and we'll strike rain barrels from it.
I just saw it was in there, and I thought, I knew we talked about it, so.
That's true.
I didn't know, didn't know if you wanted to leave it in or if...
I don't see a situation where we're going to use rain barrels per se. I mean, we're going to have hopefully some type of water containment set up there, but they won't be rain barrels in that sense.
Are we saying rain barrels will be restricted, they can't have them if they decide to stick one or two out there? I mean, that's, that's the only thing I can see why leaving it in. We're just not personally looking at bringing rain barrels in because it makes no sense. There's no collection system there, but I don't know.
You know, if it were ever the case where they, you know, wanted to bring in one or two just to kind of have them on-site.
Then that's what I'm saying, it's not necessarily, talks about how water's being distributed, it's saying the supply's on hand, maybe, and, you know, not limited to in this stuff.
Yeah. It doesn't hurt to leave it in. If they would ever use the rain barrels, I think we'd want to make sure that they were covered and that they didn't create another kind of hazard, so.
So Brad?
I could go either way on it, but I don't think we're going to see them out there, so it might be, it might be just as well to remove it. We can always put it back in.
Brad, what's your thought?
I guess I don't see any harm in leaving it in if you strike it. I mean, the language is still including but not limited guarded signage and fencing if they felt rain barrels were reasonably necessary.
The only thing is, like Steve said, you know, with the covering and things like that, should it be?
We can require that they, they can have them in there, but they're going to have them, they're going to be covered, they're going to be secured, so they can't be tipped over.
Should we put covered, secured, instead of taking it out, just add covered, secured?
I think that's fine. I guess I'm okay either way, if you wanted to strike it or covered, secured. I don't think it makes a huge difference.
I mean, the ones they showed were covered, so there wasn't an open top to it.
I mean, I guess the way I see it is, I can't see they'll ever have rain barrels down there, but maybe they'll have a couple shared, little beds they're going to be sharing as a secondary water source that I don't want to say, well, you know, we're cutting it out. I mean, we, as a city, are not looking at that as a water maintenance system, however, some of their tenants may do it, that as long as they're secured as we are requesting that, I wouldn't necessarily see that it needs to be removed, but it's kind of a minor issue.
I guess I'd move for approval of the lease, but change the wording to not limited to covered, secured water containment devices.
Whatever legal term for that would be.
No, that sounds good, actually. Because it gives us leeway for any other type of water bulk tank or what have you. I envision something low-profile that doesn't tip over, that has a lid that you can lock, and that, you know, we can fill on.
I have a turtle sandbox you could probably fill with water.
Exactly. Something like that with a padlock.
Just so the insurance, just so the insurance company likes it. Any other questions or discussion? Quick call overall.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Resolution 60-15 is approved. Consideration of resolution 62-15, approving contract and bond for UV disinfection project. Phase two, discussion.
Well, as you can see, John's not here tonight, so I'll make, I'll do my best going through these, but basically, we approved the bid to stop construction on April 6th for $1,021,800 for doing our phase two of the UV disinfection project of the wastewater treatment plant, and the contract and bond appear to be in order, and so John's asking that we approve that here tonight. This will be phase two and hopefully our final phase for the disinfection project of the wastewater treatment plant, and the plan is for them to be done by, I believe it's December 1st.
Questions or discussion?
This is all coming out of the wastewater treatment fund, right?
Ultimately, we're going to be doing a SRF loan through the state for the construction and roll the initial project design loan into that too, but yes, it's ultimately going to be paid with wastewater dollars.
So move.
Second.
Quick call overall.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Resolution 61-15 is approved. Consideration of resolution 62-15, approving contract and bond for 2015 HMA paving project. Discussion?
Our 2015 HMA, which is hot mixed asphalt paving project, it was awarded to Heartland Asphalt on March 16th, and a total bid price of $436,646.77. And this includes projects in the Yorkshire area for repaving, including water main replacement on Hart Street, Walnut Street to Riverside Drive, approximately one block of hot mixed asphalt patching on Riverside Drive south of the Canadian Pacific DME Railroad. So John has reviewed the contract and bond and requests council approval.
Further discussion?
And the payment for this will come from?
Road use tax.
I would so move.
Second.
With the exception of the water main work, the water main work will come from the water main.
Quick call overall.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Resolution 63-15 is approved. Consideration of resolution 64-15, approving change order number one for the 2015 sanitary sewer lining project. Discussion?
Yeah, our sanitary sewer lining project for 2015 is, we awarded the bid to, in situ form, for a project of $101,853.10. This project came in well under budget. We budgeted $150,000, and so we have numerous sewer lines that we try and, you know, knock out each year to get these lined, and basically the process of what we're doing is we're on existing sanitary sewer lines, we are cleaning those out and lining them by putting a PVC plastic material inside that then gets heated, expands, and seals the inside of the pipe, basically sealing any cracks and whatnot to prevent roots from growing in there and inflow and infiltration, or coming into the system, so. We benefited from some very good bids, and so we essentially had about $49,000 left that we have budgeted that we would like to approve this change order to do additional work. And so this additional change order is for $59,954, which is approximately $10,000 over what we've budgeted. And I know Dirk had mentioned that he was going to move some things around within the sewer, the sewer line portion of the budget to accommodate that extra $10,000. So we have $150 budgeted. We'd like to do a total of $161,807 and absorb that extra amount from cutting back on some other things within the department.
Questions or discussion? So move.
Second.
Quick call overall.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Resolution 64-15 is approved. Consideration of resolution 65-15, approving union contract between the city, Teamsters Local 238, Fire Department. Discussion?
Yeah, and I'll basically address both these at the same time. We have two separate contracts. We have one with the Teamsters 238 with the Fire Department, and then one with the Police Department and Public Works Departments. And so, including your packet, and I also emailed to you for easier reading, maybe easier, maybe not. You can see the colors that way, to show the changes and updates we're making in the contract. This is the first time we've opened and actually negotiated the contract in about five years, so we had some updates with wordage and language in there that need to be done, and, but essentially, the agreement that we came to was a three-year contract, looking at, as far as wages are concerned, a 3% first year, a 2.75 in year two, and a 2.75% in year three. Part of the discussion had been to include the code enforcement officers within the contract, which we did. We also agreed on requiring receipts for reimbursed meals, changed the minimum call-out time from two to three hours for PD and dispatch, and did the same thing for fire for the holidays, went from two to three hours on minimum callback. And like I mentioned, we added and removed some various positions. Public safety, you know, that wasn't in the contract that we had before, so we made some of those updates, and we also updated the clothing list for the Public Safety Department as well, so. I recommend that we approve the resolution for the fire, and same for the next one.
Further discussion?
I guess when I looked through it, I really didn't see a lot of significant changes to what was in there.
No, a lot of just small...
Kind of housekeeping type things.
Housekeeping things and...
The salaries was probably the biggest.
Salary, salaries and health insurance, those are always the biggest things you end up talking about, but by and large, a lot of things didn't change. We talked about a lot, but in the end, those are the things that it came down to, so.
I'd so move for approval.
Second. Okay, this is the first resolution for the Fire Department. Quick call overall.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Resolution 69-15 is approved. Consideration of resolution 60-15, approving change order number one for the 2015 sanitary sewer lining project. Discussion?
Yeah, our sanitary sewer lining project for 2015 is, we awarded the bid to, in situ form, for a project of $101,853.10. This project came in well under budget. We budgeted $150,000, and so we have numerous sewer lines that we try and, you know, knock out each year to get these lined, and basically the process of what we're doing is we're on existing sanitary sewer lines, we are cleaning those out and lining them by putting a PVC plastic material inside that then gets heated, expands, and seals the inside of the pipe, basically sealing any cracks and whatnot to prevent roots from growing in there and inflow and infiltration, or coming into the system, so. We benefited from some very good bids, and so we essentially had about $49,000 left that we have budgeted that we would like to approve this change order to do additional work. And so this additional change order is for $59,954, which is approximately $10,000 over what we've budgeted. And I know Dirk had mentioned that he was going to move some things around within the sewer, the sewer line portion of the budget to accommodate that extra $10,000. So we have $150 budgeted. We'd like to do a total of $161,807 and absorb that extra amount from cutting back on some other things within the department.
Questions or discussion? So move.
Second.
Quick call overall.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Resolution 64-15 is approved. Consideration of resolution 65-15, approving union contract between the city, Teamsters Local 238, Fire Department. Discussion?
Yeah, and I'll basically address both these at the same time. We have two separate contracts. We have one with the Teamsters 238 with the Fire Department, and then one with the Police Department and Public Works Departments. And so, including your packet, and I also emailed to you for easier reading, maybe easier, maybe not. You can see the colors that way, to show the changes and updates we're making in the contract. This is the first time we've opened and actually negotiated the contract in about five years, so we had some updates with wordage and language in there that need to be done, and, but essentially, the agreement that we came to was a three-year contract, looking at, as far as wages are concerned, a 3% first year, a 2.75 in year two, and a 2.75% in year three. Part of the discussion had been to include the code enforcement officers within the contract, which we did. We also agreed on requiring receipts for reimbursed meals, changed the minimum call-out time from two to three hours for PD and dispatch, and did the same thing for fire for the holidays, went from two to three hours on minimum callback. And like I mentioned, we added and removed some various positions. Public safety, you know, that wasn't in the contract that we had before, so we made some of those updates, and we also updated the clothing list for the Public Safety Department as well, so. I recommend that we approve the resolution for the fire, and same for the next one.
Further discussion?
I guess when I looked through it, I really didn't see a lot of significant changes to what was in there.
May fifth, we're gonna have the new energy team leader from Iowa Economic Development Authority visiting Charles City, and that's gonna be effectively from about one thirty to three PM. He's gonna be coming to town, initially, they're gonna be going to West Union, then coming to Charles City to check out our permeable pavers, our McQuillan Project, and then the Parkside. And speaking of Parkside, Parkside's ready and raring to go, the, the brick's in place to be installed to finalize that street, and we're just working on finalizing the, the base material there to make sure it meets drainage requirements, 'cause obviously, it's very important that we, that we meet drainage when we have a permeable street, so we're making, the frost is now out, we're verifying that, that, that the, that the aggregate underneath there is, is, will drain, and so that'll be hopefully finished here sooner than later. That, that's all I have.
Board Commissioner Committee reports. Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we're adjourned.
I really would rather stay.